All right. All right, thanks, everybody. I'm sorry I'm not able to be there in person and hopefully I don't lose any technology stuff. I'm away at a conference. And you never know how Wi-Fi is going to work at a hotel. So if I if I drop off Doug and I had a conversation earlier and you guys will just move on without me if if we run into any technical difficulties. So hopefully that doesn't happen, but we'll see. And Doug, I'm sure you've already noted the roll call.
Yes.
And then is there anybody here for item three for the appearance section? That is here to appear regarding an issue that is not on the agenda. And seeing nobody jump up to the table and not believing anybody on Zoom is here for that. I think we can close the appearance section and move on to item four, which is the approval of the May 25th, 2023 minutes need a motion and the second.
Also.
I'll second.
All right. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none on this end, Doug, is there anybody in the room that has any edit changes?
No.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes have passed and we will move on to item five, which is a public hearing by Lori Ring at 55. Doug, did I miss something?
No, I was bringing the.
Okay, perfect. Now I got this. And I only have one small little laptop screen, so I gotta like minimize Zoom to get to the agenda. So I apologize if if something's happening, but I'll I'll try to be as efficient as I can here. So item five is a public hearing by Lori Ring 5501 Winnequa Road. And is you know, just speak with us about appealing the determination by the city building inspector. Regarding section 175-70, which is the code of ordinance regarding decorative fences in the street yard for the purposes of building a new fence in the street yard of the property. This is case number Z 003 2023. And it looks like we have Lori and maybe someone else joining us and I will mute and let them share their packet. And Doug, if you can just kind of help from that end steer things in the direction for the public hearing.
Absolutely. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Chris is going to speak.
Okay, Harvey also has to speak. For this, whatever you is the applicant, you both is the applicant. And we're getting a lot of feedback on this end. Could everybody mute as possible as short as possible, please?
Okay.
Please just go now.
Okay.
Thank you. So you is the applicant. We'll introduce it. We'll pass it to, we have Dave Martin here is the city's building inspector. And then anybody else after that point will be able to speak before we close the hearing. So we'll be able to call on anybody else that might speak.
Okay. I have a question first. I've got the school chart on variances for zoning. Did somebody tell me what the purpose of the zoning for the fences?
So I can sort of take a step back on that even. The the decision process that you're referencing that's in the packet is more pertaining to the second application. It would be a traditional setback variance, something like that. This request is specifically an appeal as the city's building inspector. So it's more of a the specifically the ordinance rather than necessarily following that decision tree. So that we put that in the packet typically we're looking at the second application here that we have is looking for setback various system, things like that. This one is specifically appealing a decision. So the process is just all that. Does it basically follow the same system? No. So this for this process, because you're appealing the decision, it's specifically the you're seeking to prove that the decision was incorrect effectively. And so that's the case that is being made. So specifically here it was the decorative nature as well as the the location. That's that they're the two elements that for discussion and for the both as the applicant to to make that case.
Okay, so. It reads two different things. So does the unusual shape of the lot that is not applied in this?
It is not in this because it's very much just an appeal of the decision rather than the variance process. For setback variance would be more different to consider, you know, the hardship and consider those things. This is specifically appealing the decision that was made and seeking that to be overturned. So it's a difference overruling setback variance would be seeking to get some relief from that for reasons such as the law, the hardship.
So the fact that you know, Dave and I have talked, we've been looking on the overhead view and you said the backyard is incredibly small. So the fact that the lot has created part of this issue that's not, is that pertinent or not enough for this? Okay. Okay, so that way, so yes. So so basically, again, what we were discussing is whether or not the children's fence panel is decorative.
Yes.
Okay. So the thing, so paragraph four, section A of the fence, it says decorative fences or hedges shall be fined as a barrier which utilizes natural materials such as water stone and includes such plant materials as hedges. Wire, chain, or cyclone type fencing materials are prohibited. So I guess the question I have is in the description of the panel or a change panel, she picked a panel from Home Depot. In that paragraph and in the description of the panel, the only two words that appear in both documents is the word decorative. So I guess you know, Lori wants a diamond pattern, which is other fences, you know, and I don't know. Who read notes? I don't know if puppies is the hardship or not. Ever in someplace else that it's, you know, this is different because you end this is also a very you know, the fact that she can't use the property the way she wants with the fence that is then whatever allow. So is that part of the view or not part of the view or how it to me, my mind, my mind, they're kind of in her middle because if she had a big backyard, this wouldn't be a discussion. We would adhere to you know, the fencing ordinances, it wouldn't be an issue. The fact that it spills out, you know, back that property is odd because it's very small rear yard. There's two street yards and a shore yard. Puts her under different set of restrictions that doesn't allow her to have a fence to use the property the way she wants to use the property. So. Please.
Can I chime in? I I think we have someone that might not be able to mute and might be making it hard for the rest of us. So I'm not sure if as the host, if you're able to adjust people accordingly, if you need to, including myself, if I forget to mute myself, which can easily happen. But I I want to remind our applicant, like this public hearing section is for you to kind of share the overview of what like what you're you're coming forward to. And right now it's regarding maybe just a short description regarding what it is that you're trying to do. And then we can close the public hearing section. We can move on to the second item, which allows a little bit more of the conversation from the board to be able to address some of the questions I think you're trying to ask, but we're not able to kind of have a conversation during the the public hearing section, if that makes sense.
Lori calls her puppies. So for her, for her using property the way she wants, she needs to have a fence on what is the street yard towards Winnequa Trail that is small enough in section to not allow puppies to get out. But because it is a street yard, there's a different set of ordinances that determine what type of fence could be used. We have not found a type of fence that meets the ordinances and will keep puppies in the yard. And the fence we the defense we picked out is a diamond pattern and that was denied because it resembles chain link, which is also a diamond pattern. So is that?
That's perfect. Yeah. Is there anybody else Doug in the room to speak during the public hearing section?
I I think at this point it would be reasonable to to have the building inspector sort of outline reasons for his decision and then maybe at that point open up to to residents and other folks that would like to speak. But this is Dave Martin, city's building inspector.
So I just was following the ordinance that's written. You have it there. Or you have it. We do. It's in the packet. Yes. And so it says in street yards. They call them chain link fences are prohibited. And it's the diamond pattern of the chain link fence. So that's why I made that decision.
All right, Doug, is there anybody else there to speak in the public hearing section?
Nobody else at City Hall, but I believe at least comedy is is here. I don't know if we have a couple of other guests doing it as well. So if you could just bring yourself off mute, please. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm fine if Lori wants to put up a regular fence. There's a fence on the corner of Bridge Road and the first road past Winnequa. That used to Blair's used to live there and it's wooden and it's ugly. So if she wants to put up a chain link fence, that's fine with me as and it'll help keep her dogs in the yard, which is also fine with both of us, me and my husband. He's up fishing, so can't be here. But that's all I wanted to say is I'm all for her putting up her fence, the one she wants, doesn't matter. I think wooden fences are ugly. Neighbors put up a chain link fence in their backyard. I didn't like it, but I put it up and I'm used to it. So let her do it.
And Doug, do we have anyone else for the public hearing section?
Anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak as part of this public hearing?
Okay, I know that is this going to go to discussion again?
Or I'm a little used to that procedure here. So it will go to, this is kind of the opportunity to make a case. And then it'll go to the consideration where the board will deliberate, then any questions asked, but it would be a little bit more more focused. So if you have, you know, anything else to add, please, please share.
Okay, well, okay, I I think where we're hung up on it and I understand where Dave's position is that I've talked about Dave and Doug and they've both been you know, we we just can't reach an agreement, but they've both been very polite, courteous, helpful and everything else. Um. You know, a chain link fence was Doug actually said a definition. It's a wire woven fence. And this is not a wire woven fence. It's not a continuous fence. It's a diamond panel. I have not actually seen this panel, but typically these diamond panels are expanded metal or a flat expanded metal panel. Lori is on the creative side. She doesn't like, you know, regular stuff. So she wants something a little more whimsical. That's how she came up with the diamond pattern. So where I can, I can see where Dave said it, it had, you know, it has the appearance of chain link because it has a diamond pattern, but it is not a chain link fence. That's where you know, that's where we're, that's where we're arguing from is that you know, otherwise basically you eliminate any diamond fence because any diamond shaped fence will look like a chain link fence. And this is not a chain link fence.
No, all I think I wanted to say is I have residents, dogs too, that have gone in the road. And if anyone knows Winnequa is busy, busy, busy. And this is the only way. I've been there 12 years. I used to have a chain and fence up, but I took it down. My neighbor built. Wooden fences, me, I don't like them. I think they're ugly. The dogs chew them. They contain bugs. This is actually more durable for me for winds and withstands, withholds everything. And it keeps the puppies in. Right now I got four puppies and they're two and three pounds. So I virtually do not get anything they can dig under or go through. And this is what I had to doubt to match my kind of my house. And my house is so far back, I have no backyard. I have nothing. And if you look at the setbacks and you look at our plot map, I have a little space in the back and that's it. Otherwise, like like Chris told you, we wouldn't be here. And it's not even in the front yard. If you look at the setbacks, I'm back way back. And the area we picked out is a very, very small. And it's really, you know, I hated it to come to this, but I do not want to win guns. The dogs would chew it up and then we'll be, I'll have dogs missing.
Just said, one of the things recommends that, like, one of the types of materials that we use is stone. You know, an estimate, you know, a rough estimate for a stolen fence back there is $23,000. Not really a realistic budget number.
Is there any more information to add during the public hearing section?
Nothing else here at the city hall.
Okay. We can close that item. Let me pull up the agenda here again. So we can close item five, which is the public hearing and we can move on to item six, which is the consideration of action regarding Lori Ring's application of 5501 Winnequa Road. For the appealing of the determination of the city building inspector underneath the municipal code of ordinance 17570 regarding the code of ordinance 17522A4A, which is decorative fence of the street yard for the purposes of building a new fence in the street yard of the property. And this is case number Z 003 2023. And Doug, can you start off from the staff report side?
Yes. So the two elements that were included and included in your packet was a letter from the building inspector on the GNC letterhead. Sort of outlining the reasons this application was initially denied. This is within the building section, chapter 175. And so that's why the decision was ultimately to the building inspector. The request here is is appealing that decision. And so the the ask here of the board is really, is this the correct determination? And so it is, as mentioned, all different than the typical variance request that we are looking at. It is specifically appealing that decision. And so the, as already mentioned, the decisions and sort of the inputs to it are a little bit different. And so the two elements here that that are really in question would be the materiality of the product, of the the fact that this is within the street yard, the the fact that it's forward of the house. So anything towards the street is is going to be termed the street yard. And so it's to the board to verify that that is the case, that that was the determination that was made here. As was the case that this was not decorative and that it was one of the products that was prohibited within the ordinance. And so just as as way of background to to the boards that were in the street yard, 42 inch maximum height, as mentioned, the street yard would be anything is is determined to be anything forward of the house. In in this instance, with the fact that it's on a corner, anything for both of those, because you're on the corner, both Winnequa Road and Winnequa Trail would count as street yard. Anything between the house, sort of between the street and the the lake running along the side of the house would be the side yard where there would be chain link fence would be allowed. Materiality is not regulated within within the street yard or inside yard.
Or is that considered a shore yard because of the channel?
The shore yard would be anything beyond the house towards the the channel. And so if you're sort of deciding this, okay, just so there is no side yard. This only side yard on this property runs, I believe, would be the southern edge, sort of the width of the house effectively, if that makes sense. It's the narrow portion on on this property. But as mentioned, and that's active, it's shown in the the submitted materials on the just bottom of survey. The section that says rear yard with ways that the definitions are here, anything towards, you know, if you're sort of bounding this, anything forward of the house towards Winnequa Road would be interpreted as street yard, same again with Winnequa Trail. Anything from the house towards the lagoon would be shore yard, which again would have similar restrictions as this. And so the portion that we're looking at would be the the southwest portion that runs along the front and back of the house, if you roll from this top down. So sort of the the longer portion of the rectangle that would be the house towards the neighbor and away from the streets. So those elements would would allow for a six foot fence that could be chain link. But the challenge here is anything forward that would be determined in the street yard and then it runs into the challenges that that we're looking at. And so materiality, it's the the materials that are prohibited have been mentioned. And the intent here is the decorative nature sort of as the ordinance is written. And so those are the the elements that the board would be looking for is the determination of the materials, but also then the the street yard, the determination of that. So those two elements are the two things that were determined by the building inspector and those are the two things to be reviewed. As mentioned in the materials, the updated materials referencing the Home Depot product is, as I understand, the applicant's preference to perceive it rather than the other materials. You have site survey here, but also the fence permit application with the old materials. So please, for the purposes of discussion, it would be the Home Depot product on the sort of earlier as an active, that would be the project that's expiration. Thank you.
All right. And so Doug, if if I understand the the request for and the decision kind of for this group, it's really narrowed down to it was the determination from the building inspector accurate in in reference to the definition that spelled out in the ordinance specific to decorative fence or not decorative fence? And we're we're not going into other, like, other areas are not part of this conversation. It's it's really specific to that first item is ultimately the the case of the fence panels that are being desired to be put up. Was it a correct classification to deny it based on the ordinance that's written, not on our opinion, but based on the ordinance as it's written? Did staff kind of do things correctly is is what I'm seeing it as?
That that's correct with with the sort of it's a linked determination that it'd be in the street yard. So clarifying that because it was of course, be the reason for the materiality and all of those things. But those two elements, yes, the two that the board has requested.
Okay, so I'll try to even help us out. I'll I'll start with the people that we have on Zoom and have you kind of share your your thoughts related to the ordinance on item one. Do you believe this is the correct definition of a street yard? And two, based on the panel and the information that was in the packet. Do you believe that the building inspector was accurate in their description that this is a chain leak or chain leak like product and therefore is prohibited in that section? And if not, any reasoning why that might be the case? And Doug, I'm actually let you pick the order because I can't see everybody on my screen. Sorry.
We've got when when Davies top left, so we'll start with them.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate all the definitions and insight, all the products and locations, right? If you're not familiar with the area. It is a unique property. I gotta admit. So it the definition, I'm trying to find out what side yard, rear yard, shoreline yard, right? That was well explained, I think, in the Platte survey. I've looked at the Platte survey over pretty well. So I agree that the survey is correct with the side yard interpretations and in front yard interpretations. So I'm agreeing with with that. I had a chance to go online and look at that product right from their site to hopefully fully understand what that looked like best I could without looking in person. What I see is that the the pattern, right, simulates chain link, but from what I see, that is actually a wire fence panel. And the first word in that description says wire or chain length. So that is a wire fence panel from my seat and how I am looking at that. Unless somebody tells me otherwise, I'm agreeing with inspector and his decision.
Brian, the applicant would like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, if it's not one of the expanded metal, does that change your opinion?
Wire is metal. Right? We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get in in determining your opinion on word definition or not expand metal, wire metal as a wire metal in my in in my my seat when I look at the site. The manufacturer's description may be different, but all said and done, I agree with the inspector's decision.
Okay, so the venue, so all it's manufactured. If it is indeed that made of wire, but it does look like wire from what you can see online, that's enough?
I I think it's the the determination based on the the product description. And Doug, if you allow me screen sharing access, I have the item pulled up if I have the correct item.
Just making you co-host now, so you should go.
All right, and I'll try to avoid you guys having to see all my emails. All right. So it's the steel mesh garden fence. And if I back on tab. It has an expanded description. That's what I'm trying to get to here. So this is the panel description here. I think this is one of the things that you know, highlights out from the product description of getting the look of chain like chain link fencing system without the hassle of the digging the holes and pouring the concrete. It it clearly is marketing towards a panel that simulates chain link fence, but in a paneled version that allows it to be, I guess, in my assessment more rigid to be in a panel where if it was interwoven wire and not fused together, it that panel might just not be hold up the integrity to stay in a panel shape. So clearly they're trying to make a panel that simulates chain link fence. And so I think to to your question of if it's, I I can't remember how you phrase that, like, does it matter what type of metal and kind of how it was put together? I I think that's less connected to the definition and much more regarding, is it a wire fence or made of metal? And then is it in that pattern? That's kind of what the definition of chain link fencing is. Doug, who do we have next?
Ryan is the other, the other member online.
Hi, I just had one question. When I read this description, it says no bit, no dig. It also says, you know, you don't need to pour concrete in order to set these. So hmm, that made me wonder, why is this? Does this have to be considered a offense in our regulation? Because it seems more like a temporary structure rather than something that's going to be set in the ground permanently.
I can, I can respond to that. I think that really gets to the point of definitions. So back in in the packet again, the my research at 175 fences and hedges would be any partitioned structure, wall, gate or plant materials that may simply post and boards. Pailing is more than wire, we'll sign it, used as a dividing marker, barrier or enclosure. So I would say that sort of leads to that. And and the fact that this would be located sort of along boundary lines and creating that exposure sort of led to that, the reason for that fence.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I I have, I guess I have to agree that this is the fences intended to to look like chain link fence and in the regard of decorative, it it is similar to a chain link fence. I still I I I don't know, again, like you defined Doug, I don't know if there's wiggle room in in that definition, but again, what I'm seeing is something that I could put out in my yard and leave there for a week or leave there for a month and then and then move and put in a different position, right? Which doesn't feel to me as permanent or doesn't feel to me as not as decorative as a chain link fence that might go all the way around the side of my side yard.
Yeah, Ryan, I I I I hear your point, especially in the idea of it. It does have a more temporary feel to it, which also has a concern regarding. I think the installation aspect and the ability to have a it be well maintained. Given that the spikes that go in, they look like they would definitely heave with our our freezing thaw cycle. Which also might have some concern with with such a product and kind of our our area of the world, except for where I am right now in San Diego, but.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense. I I but in that regard, I see I could see it still as more of a stake that I put out to tie my dog to rather than a permanent chain link fence, right?
Yep, yep, for sure. And right now, we don't have any better definition for temporary versus permanent. We just have a definition of like how offenses are described and it and it does meet that standard of like how it's organized and how it's kind of put up. So Doug, it sounded like you might have more.
Would would like to speak.
Yeah, I just want to mention that Brian, you mentioned about the stability, Chris is the contractor, people took a lot of different fences. The fences that I see that actually borders my property right now is actually falling apart. He's only had it there a few years. It's rotting out, it's bowing and the fences that I see elsewhere, you know, something like this is going to be more durable, the wind and not rotting out. And so I mean, when you say it's not durable, I think you need to look at some of the fences around Menona, they're falling apart, you know? I don't think they're durable either. I mean, wood does rot, it does have bugs and dogs can treat it. So this is my whole purpose of all this. And I've lived here twelve years, it's not like I'm new to the neighborhood and I want to cause disruptive. I have dogs I want to maintain. And keep everyone safe in the neighborhood and getting my dogs injured or someone else by them running out in front of the streets. That's all.
No, and and know that this body like that that's why I was really trying to narrow down what it is that we're being asked to kind of answer as a appointed body and it's really the question of was the interpretation based on what ordinance is in in place? Was that done correctly versus the idea of the other types of items that we see at this group? For example, the 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 need to expand in a different setback or or something to that accord, which is a very different question for this group. And that that's why we were kind of trying to narrow down, what is it that we're actually focused on? And as a related to durability, I I was talking about the durability of the the freeze thaw cycle, not not necessarily the deterioration of the product itself. Just that how it's anchored to the ground, it would be more susceptible to the freeze and thaw cycle, because those stakes that are hammered in definitely have a a different setting compared to something that is more permanently installed with a concrete base going down through the for the frost line. That's that's what I was referencing. So definitely not not comparing it to other fences that may be rotten and falling apart in other other areas. That's a a different issue all the other. Perfect. And Doug, who do we have up next?
Nobody else on Zoom, so it would be into the room, I guess Brad.
Yes, yeah. But I appreciate the purpose and the thoughtfulness of what is trying to be done. But but especially with a problem like this, which is a little bit different than what we're used to, I'll be dealing with. I spent some time in the in the ordinance to to really truly understand it. And whenever I'm dealing with an ordinance like this, the first thing I do is I I go right to the right to the language of the ordinance to try to glean the intent and and really give give meaning to those words and if we get right to the definition of what's a street yard or, you know, a shore yard. Will we look at that definition? I think Doug did a very good job of defining that and setting that out and reminding us what those definitions are. I find that number one. I I think the definition was determined correctly. And that we're that that brings us right to chapter one seventy five. And we're looking at then the definition of a decorative fence. And I think one, we look at the words shall shall be defined. It's a mandate. There's no wiggle room there. It has to be defined as a barrier which utilizes natural materials such as wood or stone. I don't find number one that galvanized steel is a natural material. And then it further clarifies that wire chain link or cyclone type fencing or materials are prohibited. And I think when stated it when he said it simulated chain link fence, and I think that's that's right on point where we have something that's that's the type of materials or fencing that appears to be wire chain link or cyclone type fencing. It's a chain link tight fence. The expanded definition says get the look of chain link. So so I think it fits squarely in the definition of the the type of fencing that the ordinance was designed to specifically prohibit. And I think that the decision was made correctly for those reasons.
I guess I would go to the height. And that if this is anything over forty two inches is prohibited. Am I correct?
Correct.
And this is fifty one inches.
Fifty one two twice thirty seven point three.
Thirty seven point three.
Thirty seven point three.
And she changed it.
Okay. So then I have a question about where the fence is at this line. No, it's just going around here.
Right, it's the the thirty feet old, the thirty two six over and then back. So it's this I had labeled as a side yard before I knew it was a street yard as well. Yes, it's this, yep, it's that area right there.
And I took a look at the product online and they have some pictures where they show the panels put together and I agree that anyone looking at that would say it's a chain fence. So I think it meets the definition. The chain link fence, it's all steel. Which we typically think of chain link fences as being all steel or similar material.
But I could put up a fence that has big holes and it's all metal and that's appropriate? I mean, because you said I could have a steel fence that had, because many were quote unquote, you said that was acceptable, but that's metal. I'm just wondering what the difference is, why I could have that but not have a panel. I didn't write the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't say it says metal. So I'm just curious. And I actually thought I was here to not to to argue his decision, I was here to see about how to get my fence up.
Well, and so this this is one avenue to to do so, to to appeal the decision, to to sort of see the the decision we overturned based on the interpretation and and definition of the ordinance. There is the option, I I shared this, I spoke to the city attorney and sort of got the the paths and options that you have. There is an option for for a variance from a from the materials and and specifically to that as well, that that could be an option. Additionally, ordinance, you know, revising the ordinance is another option to to specify or to clarify, you know, and petitioning council to do so, that that is another option. That that you have, you know, if this is is not to be successful, so there are options and then I can certainly continue, you know, we can, we can talk again after the meeting if what other options you would like to seek, but that was the specific because the decision had been made, it had been, you know, the decision to deny the application had been made and so that that's the first step, the applying that, applying for and appealing the decision of the building inspector. There's also, I I believe I shared as well, that there's the option to appeal to city council as as well, so there are, you know, there are other options and I'll continue as a staff work with you on that. If this, you know, after this meeting, if this is unsuccessful.
And and Doug, did I hear a question from our applicant regarding the clarification regarding other fence materials that are used in a street yard? And what what items get approved? Because I I I thought I heard something in reference to something with much larger hole, like, I'm just curious of of the the answer regarding that question, because I I think that might help some of us as well.
Yes, and there there has been precedent for the for a forty two inch, you know, the aluminum, that sort of black finish, the the traditional with the the traditional product that you would see with the wider gaps, as as mentioned, such a narrow that depends on the one wrought iron type type fence, the definition that we interpretation of that, see if it will be patients to be approved, but it may seem that you can show that to him somehow or we probably
the error is part of if you could see the dead fence right there. It's typically made of square tubing. And we did anyway, actually discussed that type of fencing with Doug and Dave, but the problem obviously is the gap is too large, a puppy will run right through it.
So previous determinations have been made by by the by my predecessor and I have continued that and showed that would be applicant with a forty two inch product of that type, more decorative in nature, is is allowable. Really, the the interpretation and definition of this ordinance, a lot of it comes to the express prohibition of those products, as as mentioned in the ordinance for the other type, but we certainly ran through, you know, options, so the wooden fence stones, of course, mentioned that there are alternative products that are available. Wooden, but also that sort of wrought iron, wrought iron type heat that look, I believe it's typically aluminum, but we have had recent examples of that being approved.
All right, and so I I see when has hand up and what I I think I saw in that photo and I think I'm hearing are panels that I think of when I think of railings on stairs, that looking material and sometimes they're even placed between stone columns, but it's clearly a decorative wrought iron fence, but even though it might be made of a different product. That that helps me when I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of things we can add and we're here to help find, right, solutions for our homeowners in all these situations, right? Sometimes it is a a style choice that we prefer to, you know, a homeowner you prefers to use versus something else. And one thing I did notice in the you know, some of these zoning codes, regulations, rebuilding codes refer to wood, right? Because when they were written, what? Thirty, forty, fifty years ago? There was only wood and metal. But today's world, wood is being replaced with composite materials. Right? Plastic composite mineral based materials, which can be put on horizontally or vertically in that sense. So there is some, I think, when someone says it has to be wood. I think, again, wood is being replaced with those materials, so there may be other options on the table there. To find an alternative product to help that that homeowner. I just want to kind of define that when it says wood, wood should could be replaced with composite. In 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 a decorative sense, and I'm not here to debate that or discuss it, but I wanted to at least give my professional insight of when they talk about wood in the code regulations, we are now or they are now accepting composite as an alternative product in that sense, okay? And that was the only thing I wanted to add.
Ask a question. Yeah. Okay, if I understand you right, but the paragraph that you read says the barrier which utilizes natural materials. So are you seeing vinyl, vinyl composites count as a natural material? I'm 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 not understanding what you're saying, I guess.
Is wood in that sentence as a natural material?
Okay, it reads decorative fences or hedges shall be defined as a barrier which utilizes natural materials such as wood or stone to include such plant materials as hedges.
And my comment was that in some of the building code regulations, when they talked about wood, when they wrote the codes and regulations, they never wrote it about other products that simulate wood or look like wood. It's now composite. It's it's just it's just my professional insight about using words with those descriptions, okay? I mean, I don't want to, I I don't want to confuse anyone, but I think there is some discussion about that. If you wanted to use a product that looked like wood, you could use that. As an
Okay, I don't want necessarily, well, be what's a dead horse, but my question is, would Dave sit here? So if we've been the material that is vinyl or composite, that will be acceptable?
Yeah, I I can't answer that. I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to express the opinion about the
We've allowed sort of the treated wooden materials. I I think the the vinyl the traditional that you would see the six foot tall vinyl, I think that that gets into a challenge again of what's decorative, you know, as as being discussed here. Which gets to the point of the wrought iron product of of how that is intended to look, you know, and be decorative in nature, whereas the the vinyl is is truly making a a barrier, you know, there's no gap, there's no, so that's really, I mean, different types, things simulating wood, giving a wood effect, some sort of a picket type appeal, something like that. I think would meet the spirit of this. And and again, it is the building section, but I would say that something
I mean, part of what I'm trying to clarify, so we don't end up here again, and we have everybody here, so what I what I'm not understanding is, okay, so you could you could take a wood fence, wood picket, put them tight to tight where you can't see it, but you cannot do a vinyl product that simulates wood, that's a panel?
You can't.
So what I'm saying too. I mean, it looks like wood. I'm sorry, you, up until now, we read it as natural material, so I assumed all composites, vinyl, things like that were off the table. So this is, you know, this is something different, because I I don't consider those natural materials.
I guess I'm just confused about why we're having this discussion. I mean, we're here for this application, not like what could be a future application. And I I think it's beyond the scope of what we're here to do.
Yeah, it it's it's a it's it's varying off of the assessment of was was what was denied, was it denied correctly? Which I I think we can, we can make a determination and someone can kind of would put that together in in words and we can have kind of a determination by this body. I think if the applicant is considering other types of potential products, I think it would be working with Doug and our building inspector to see, are they, are they, they meeting the essence that's listed in the ordinance? And as when was pointing out, there are items that are being professionally determined to be closer to being considered wood or wood like product versus others, but that's not for for tonight's discussion. Closer to being considered wood or wood like product versus others, but that's not for for tonight's discussion. I think he was just adding that in of, you know, there might be some other options that uh, a homeowner might choose. That still meets the needs that they have, but still also fits within our our code.
I guess the only thing I'm I'm frustrated about is that in your in your um. Whatever your code here, but yet when I got this thing from David, says it can be metal, wood composite or masonry, but your ordinance do not say that. So I don't understand, you're telling me no to a chain link fence, but I can have a metal straight thing, because you think it looks more decorative? So it's very confusing to me, because it's not in your ordinances, but when Dave sent me this, it says. I can have metal, wood composite or masonry materials, the metal fence you showed in your presentation would be an acceptable choice if it's proper height. What is the difference between a chain link and a metal fence here? One more thing, the same thing, this metal fence here goes in the ground, just like the one, the diamond panel I want, the same thing. As the freeze goes and neighbors have this and it was approved, so I really know if it's not the ordinances, then how come?
Because it says wire, chain link or cyclone type fencing material. And if we determine it's a cyclone type, wire type, chain link type fencing, it's not allowed.
Like that says here.
I know, we're also just not, we're also just not here to debate that specific fence, we're here to debate the fence that was proposed. So we didn't have to get to that issue.
And is anybody willing to move forward with a uh, statement for us to vote on?
I'll I'll make, I'll make a motion that the um, determination of the the building inspector was correct. Um, when it comes to the street yard assessment, um, and the decorative nature um, um, of the fence, um, and and move to affirm.
Is there a second?
Do you want me to get, because of the the um, specific, in my opinion, the specific um, nature of the the shall be mandatory. Um, and in the specific prohibited prohibit prohibition of wire chain link or cyclone type fencing. Um, in in the street yard, um, I would move to um, affirm the building inspector's determination.
And is there a second?
My second, Ed.
All right, any any other discussion or questions that anybody from the committee has first? Right, hearing none, um. Uh, for the applicant, I hear your frustration and I understand your. Uh, you're likely not satisfied by the motion that's on the floor here for us to vote on. And what I've also heard from Doug is there are um, additional paths for your frustration. And and how that consideration can be can be taken up, um, but this this group. Their responsibility is really regarding the the item that's on on the floor for us to determine was. Did did our building inspector attribute things correctly as laid out for us, based on this board's authority? And I think what you're you're hearing from this group is that we do affirm that, um. And if there's continued frustration, it's not this board to uh, look at a reconsideration, it would be a different path to have that. And.
There there's a motion, can we get a a formal vote on that, please?
Yep, yep, I was gonna do that, I just wanted to uh, lay that out and at least uh, um, lay out that I. I I know that there are people here that have other maybe thoughts on what could be done, but that's not what we're here to to do tonight. Um, and I know there are other considerations, but I wanted you to know that that's why we're we're. Uh, gonna move to this next up, which is taking a vote on that motion to affirm uh, the building inspector's interpretation of the the denial. And all those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
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 And all those opposed. All right, hearing none, um, and and Doug, uh, please do like work with our applicant. On what next steps that they have for some different either considerations or how they could move forward with other appeals if if that was the case.
Absolutely. Can I speak, just so we. Okay, appreciate everybody's time. You're you're absolutely right, our frustration is that Lori cannot use the property in a way she's intended because of designation of side yards, everything else. My frustration with this meeting tonight is I did not understand that this is what it was. I thought it was a variance meeting where everything would be taken into a consideration, given, you know, it's because I I highlighted when. They actually came out of the package that we got, it said generally hardships arise because of unusual shape, so a lot has a very unusual shape. So my frustration with this board is that I did not understand what we were doing tonight. I thought it was to be looked at as a whole picture and possibly given a variance for the fencing.
I I definitely hear that and understand um, how that would be frustrating as an applicant in in your position. And uh, I apologize if that was not. Either much more explicitly clear or or had that, um. Unfortunately, like this group can't can't address that other other piece. We 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 don't get the opportunity to to switch a determination of a definition of what is a street yard. And then be able to to switch over and make uh, a variance on materials when it's it's laid out. The those, that's not the jurisdiction of this body, unfortunately.
No, and and it was it was a misunderstanding on my part, my understanding was that you had the ability to grant a variance on the type of fence. You could look at the whole lot and the whole fence as a whole and grant a variance based on that, I did not understand. I mean, this is not all, you know, the determination of the fence that is too chain link like looking, I expected. What I expected was it'd be looked at a more global level and be granted a variance of some kind on that. So that's that's the frustration with this, I I mean, I, you know, if I would have known it was gonna be, whether or not to uphold Dave's vision of a chain link fence. We would not be here, we would have pursued a different app, different avenue.
Okay, I I apologize if if that wasn't as clear and I understand frustration for sure. Yep, uh. Uh, we need to move on. No, that's, I understand.
Are we up, Doug? Yes, you are.
Yep, I'm just trying to find my um, my agenda here. So we are on uh, to item seven, which is a public hearing uh, by Ken and Melissa Waltz, uh, forty four oh five Outlook Street. And request a variance from the code of ordinance, section four eighty twenty four D four B, which is side yard setbacks. And code of ordinance four eighty twenty four D four D, the shore yard setbacks for the purpose of building a second floor addition. On their existing property, and this is case number Z zero zero four twenty twenty three. And um, I will mute myself and let the applicant kind of share what is that they're looking for here.
We want to wait until. Well, uh, good evening, my name's, my name's Ken, Ken Walls, uh, my wife Melissa is not here with me, she's home with her kids right outside. But uh, Mark Collin is here with me, he's a a building designer and uh. And home builder who uh, helped me out with the uh, blueprints that you guys uh, saw with our application tonight. Um, and I guess what we're interested in doing, I think the basic thing we're interested in doing is adding onto our house. Um, we bought the house thirteen years ago now, when it was just me and my wife, we've now got two kids. Um, and two dogs, uh, so our family's growing and we're interested in adding a second story. Um, and we're seeking some relief on the setbacks. Uh, the existing structure was built in nineteen twenty six, so before Manona was a city before it was a village. When it would have been a summer home that was part of that kind of moving growth. Um, you know, it's a century old house, been there longer than the zoning ordinance for sure. Um, if you if you had a chance to look at the uh, the survey map that we had, it's a it's a pretty unique lot, um. It's uh, it's one of the smallest lots on the lake and and we had the smallest house on the lake. Um, and as you can see, the lots are regularly shaped, it has a long driveway that actually serves as a right away for the utilities. Um, lot lines aren't parallel, nor are they perpendicular. Um, and the original house encroaches into the setbacks that were established after it was built. When they they built the house, they got it pretty close to parallel to the one lot line. Within about six tenths of a degree, um, which was probably pretty good for surveying in at nineteen twenty six, but not quite. And as a result, the setback on that runs right through the entire wall of the house, the entire length of the house. Um, when they, when they placed the house, it would have at one point in time at the facade of the house. Parallel to the shoreline, but the shoreline's changed over the last hundred years. If you look at the the nineteen oh one survey map from U W Madison, when EA surveyed it, it doesn't look the way it does anymore. And I lost two more feet of shoreline a couple of years ago in the last flood. So so the whole house is kind of rotated in a funny way relative to where the shoreline is today. Um, and and as a result, the first, the the existing uh, structure, the house is encroached on the shore yards. On the north yard next to my neighbor and also encroached by the garage. And and that makes it difficult to build up and respect those setbacks. Um, so what we've tried to done with do with our 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 building plans is to at least uh. Respect the spirit of the the zoning ordinance and try to conform to it where we can. Um, it it's challenging to do on a house that we can't really expand laterally, the only way to to add. At spaces to go up, um, it's also a real challenge, because we've got a lot of mature trees on all sides of us. You've got two hundred year old oaks and hundred year plus old maples on that yard, so you don't really want to be disturbing a whole lot of ground. Or lose some really nice uh, trees that are older than all of us. Um, so uh, if if you had a chance to look at the plans, you can kind of see what we're proposing is building the second story. On top of the first, using the existing uh, foundations and walls for all of the load bearing support of others. What was that?
I've I'm just adding to what Ken said, on the side yards, we're uh, looking to be able to use. Both side yards of the uh, of the foundation, existing foundation.
Yeah, no, no, thank you for, thanks for adding in, Mark. Um, the one spot that we are able to like correct the encroachment into the setback is where the existing garage is. Um, there's one wall of garage that's a little bit compromised right now by some tree roots, so um. We are proposing knocking out that wall and putting in a new frost wall there that will get us into compliance in that yard on the uh, south. Uh, I guess it'd be the southwest corner that we can get back to within compliance with the setbacks. Um, and then on the shore yard, we proposed with the second story, having having a balcony and bringing the second story back. Um, away from the water's edge, trying coming to compliance as best we can with the uh, setback on the second story.
You kind of see that notch we was talking about on sheet four.
Thanks.
And perhaps we're thoughtful about the nineteen twenty six, it's probably best illustrated on sheet A one. Where like Ken was describing is a darkened and black. Probably illustrates a passport. Uh, the the meat and bone system on that side yard and the shore yard setback. Encroachment to existing.
Yeah, so that's our existence. Yeah, so you can see we're encroached on the shore yards, the whole lawn, going through the walls into the setback and then the corner of the garage.
Yeah, the garage is known as as a. Now triangular that uh, is decrepit and to be replaced as. And brought back and and we and therefore we can comply with that setback.
I guess that's that's my situation, I've got a pretty unique home, it's awfully old, but it's in solid shape. That my, I've got four concrete foundations that are crack free, uh, I've got a dry basement, my walls are plumb, my floors are dead flat. Um, so I'd like to keep it that way and and bring this house sort of uh, into the next century. By the time we, you know, execute the project, we'll be looking at, you know, a total of just over two thousand square feet a home. Compared to the nine hundred and forty that we have now, but that's still small relative to my neighbors. And you know, it's it's not gonna be a five thousand square foot mansion. I I I think the request is kind of modest and we're trying to do our best to respect the zoning ordinance as we can. Working within the constraints of the the structure that we have.
Doug, is there anybody in the room to speak on the public hearing side?
Nobody else in the room, we have one, one person joined by phone, I don't know if.
That was Susan, uh, my neighbor, um, and we actually included a letter with our application. Susan was one of the signatories to that, uh, our three nearest neighbors, we we shared the plan with all of our neighbors and. Um, you know, they all supported our project and encouraging us, so. We we've got really nice neighbors who love the neighborhood, you know, our intention is to stay there for the next twenty, thirty years. We've got a five year old and a one year old at home, so hopefully they'll graduate from Manona High School and won't be able to, you know, continue to live where we do, so.
All right, and you know, did Susan want to speak tonight or did just here to listen, do you think?
I I think she was just interested to see how the process went out, I saw her just the other day, she was asking me a little bit more about the the project. And shared with her a few of her plans and stuff like that, um, I think the fence deliberation probably got a little bit long for her to stay on this evening.
All right, understandable, um, so Susan, if you're there and you want to speak during the public hearing section. Feel free to take yourself off of mute and you can do that, and if not, you are welcome to stay on mute and we will move on to the next section. Not seeing any change, I will switch over and close, I gotta find my agenda again here, everybody. Um, close seven and move on to eight, which is the consideration of action. Uh, for Ken and Melissa Waltz at forty four oh five Outlook Street for requesting a variance from. Uh, our code of ordinance, section four eighty twenty four D four B, the side yard setbacks. And the non-miscible code of ordinance, section four eighty twenty four D four D, the shore yard setbacks. For the purpose, building a second floor addition to the existing property, this is case number Z zero zero four twenty twenty three. And Doug, do you want to kick us off with the staff report?
Thank you, so kind of, uh, I think one of the first places to start on this and the place to start really is the definitions of the yards. Uh, just given the the shape of the lot and and so the challenge is that. So the the easy one is um, anything beyond the house, what's the label, um, being shore yard. The um, the street yard is actually defined as anything um, in connection with the uh, the driveway there. And so you can see that's hundred and eight feet, so that is is well clear. Anything else um, that immediately the face of another lot, um, so you've got kind of got three portions there. I've got a portion facing lot six, uh, out lot one, as well as lot four. Those three um, all count as effectively side yards and would be subject to the seven foot setback requirements. And so the setbacks are shown on the submit materials are correct. Um, and we've been working to to make sure that that's the case, um, so the definitions here, the um. The the sort of running the the length of the house would be seeking that side yard, um, variance. Portion on the shore yard, would be the shore yard variance, and as mentioned, the applicant is looking to to cure the um. Um, southwestern portion of the the uh, the approach of the garage, rebuild that, um, so that will be looking to be addressed. Um, I have mentioned that that I met with, um, the applicant multiple times to to sort of run through this application, um, answer questions that they've had. Um, and it's been a very cooperative and collaborative process. Um, the other thing I I would like to mention, um, that I with this request and and make the request that this be part of a potential motion. Is you may see here the uh, the two lots, um, it's actually how this was originally plotted, um, back when the city was formed. You see a lot five as well as a lot six, and there's a lot of things on the survey here, but you see that dotted line running through some. One corner of of the house, one four, sort of running parallel with the lot line. Um, the recommendation here would be that this as built, the house is obviously across two lots, um, it's legal, nonconforming, but it is grandfathered. Any change to this, any expansion, um, you know, lose that status, um, and so the recommendation here would be that. Any potential action be conditioned on this um, being remedied if you're. Uh, which would most likely be some sort of combination, we can certainly talk about that offline, I I know that I I wore that up today. But um, just want to to sort of address that, but regardless, the the setbacks, the um, sort of, you know, the variance request holds the same. Um, and it would effectively be a condition that, say, prior to building permits or something like that, that this, you know, combination. Say prior to building permits or something like that, that this, you know, combination would be done such that it complies. So just to request that for staff. So the the elements um to to discuss would be the 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 walls, um and so the encroachment there. The minor encroachment on the second floor, um the shore yard that is highlighted. Um, the final piece is to to highlight as well, um which. But we have these uh architect here in the room as well. The steps on the the first floor, I I don't know if the applicant, but maybe um has some snow more in terms of. Unnecessary they offer access. So we have, we do have provision in the ordinance that allows. Um, for the step, the most creepy in height that are necessary for access. Um, the challenge is always the um the creep of those and sort of the encouragement of those that it becomes a neckless steps or something. I I would like some clarification if you may. Um, it would still be a part of the shore yard setbacks, but just something else for the um. So to for the board to consider that, um if maybe if you could just um. You do you know the heights of those by chance?
Yeah, the um, there's uh. You can comment the elevation, one, two, three, four risers. And uh twenty-eight inches. And um, that's existing floor. And so uh. The. Over uh there there is a two riser depression in the existing living room currently. Uh, that is in the new plan and overbuild. So the entire first floor plate is going to existing at twenty inches. And just running with state code allowing uh egress.
Yes.
Into uh setbacks.
Since clarify, I'm I'm sorry, the the main level is being raised, is that correct?
Then to know that, no, the main level is staying where it is. The um, the section of the main level. Is uh in the living room is being raised to existence. Does that make sense?
It does.
There's a sunken living room. We're fixing it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We had a lot of water encroachment, you know, to the yard, the last flood. Um. We really don't want to have that sunken living room down there being at risk in the future, so the idea is to raise the sunken living room up to the same plane as the rest of the house. To give us that buffer there on the shore yard side in case we have water coming through.
Like for instance, there isn't existing egress right now at twenty inches at at that floor height.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for staff.
And Doug, can you clarify? I I heard you say something about three feet. And like, because this is clearly below the three 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 feet. And how does that figure into what you were sharing from your staff report?
So the ordinance allows for encroachment within different yards and that may be street yard, side yard, um shore yard. It allows for um anything three feet or less um to to encroach that is necessary for access to to a permanent structure. And so um I would say there is some interpretation left, some room for interpretation in terms of. Suddenly the the measurements here, twenty-eight inches, you know, it falls within that. Um, I do see uh on other applications, you know, folks uh adding a two hundred square foot deck. Right. To the steps, so.
No, we don't want to do that. Are are you are small enough as this?
So I so I think um maybe some some detail, at least what I look at is, is this a a double sliding door? Is this, you know, so how how does the, say, the width of the um this landing of the steps, um how does that play? Um, to I suddenly see one, is it, is it a single door or is it a?
It's a double sliding door.
You can see it on uh A five.
And so then. Doug, the death of the landings. And the um uh matches the width of the door, but also it it's by their yeah, Wisconsin state code requires a landing.
Yeah.
For uh uh two or more risers, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I would say for for the staff level, that satisfies the the steps. Um, suddenly I decided to state code. Um, as it relates to that, I like to, this is a perfect example of having that width. That makes sense that it's it's not, there's not five feet extra, there's not, you know, an additional landing. This to me was functional um and and to meet that intent, so. Just to clarify, this this would not be a part of it. The short, only shore yard would be the second story. Um, that's. Thank you.
Perfect, and and Doug, uh let's carry on the same tradition that we just set up with our last applicant and I'll let you call, I'll call people. And I think I'm hearing what you want us to kind of talk through is. Shore yard, but as it relates to uh the second story. Although it's encroaching less than the first floor walls that already exist, so it's stepping back. But there's still an encroachment and then sidewall or side yard. They're gonna go up exist the the same plane as the existing sidewalls, so it's got the same encroachment. And then on the. We'll call it the garage side, we're actually. Stepping back the encroachment that already exists, but it will still. Encroach on that side as well.
No, no, no. That was cured, so that.
That one cures, okay. Um, and then the the stairs already fit in, so we don't even need to address that. But then the other item is. Uh, if someone does make a a motion to add in the flavor of. All of this should be contention on the approval of a C S M to cure the two, the building across lot lines. Basically.
I would leave it open to to a sort of lot combination rather than a C S M specifically, uh I'll. The attorney to get details to to the applicant to kind of finalize that.
Yeah, I I I do have lots of questions about that because we don't own all of lot five and lot six. Our our neighbors' houses are also on lot five and lot six, so.
So I think some some scope there would be helpful. Uh, and so those those elements certainly of of the request, but also. Of course, through the lens of the decision, uh with the hardship of the property and those elements as well, but thank you.
Perfect. Perfect, um and I think you started with when last time, so we'll start that.
Correct.
I'm the lucky winner. Okay, all right. Okay, uh, yeah, I think I I looked the plans over uh pretty thoroughly, actually. Um, so I appreciate the level of detail. Um, as you know, we get a variety of of. Detail, let's call it, uh when somebody. Looks into variances, right? Um, especially the magnitude of new homes. Um, and making sure that we're uh discussing the things that uh at hand. Seems like the irregularity of lots come up more often than. Than than not, this definitely right, uh it's one of those about the easement with the driveway. Understanding that, um. Do you know what that's um? I I don't think I dug into it too. Do you happen to know what the total square footage a lot is?
Yeah, it's on the survey, uh seventy-six hundred.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah. Says somebody's driveways, um. Okay, yeah, so definitely that lot size is. Pretty tight in that in that sense, so. Uh, I appreciate uh the efforts you guys put into uh looking at the setback requirements for both. Side yards as well as, is it okay to call it rear?
Uh, sure.
Right, just call it garage end.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, front, back, um. So, um, I do appreciate that, um some thought that uh uh you said went into that. Um. I completely understand about uh right, uh shore yard and. When you're on the lake, you do lose property sometimes due to mother nature. Understanding that, so that's somewhat uh. Um, gray in that sense of where is that new shoreline at and that footage? Um, stepping back the second story, um. Definitely helps, um in that sense. I think Doug probably already hit my. First and foremost question I had for you tonight was. Um, I did not see any measurements um on the egress or the 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 deck structure that's proposed. There was no measurements there on the plans. I only seen one measurement, but that really didn't define the exterior or the perimeter of that deck and steps itself. Um. And knowing that it does allow for that uh that. Into encroachment into the the area, I still feel there should be some dimensioning to that.
I think that the venue of the first, when we're talking about the steps on the.
Yeah, the shore yard, yeah.
That is on, that's on A two.
So, there's one measurement there actually. Okay, that. Is what shows the steps, yes. Um, and then it shows the platform width. Um.
Oh, I s- I. Yeah, that's code width for landing, three feet.
Okay.
And and then the risers are down eleven inches.
Yeah.
From friends and risers.
I guess, you know, I guess at some point there'll be some de- uh definition with that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I I guess my point is just making sure that uh there is some definition with that, so. Um, even though it does allow you, um. All of a sudden, it doesn't get twice the size of that just because it allows you to encroach, um. I guess that from my seat, uh I always see like the better definition, there should be some description, right? And uh dimensioning of what you're going to be building there, even though it does allow egress. Um. Like Doug said, um all of a sudden someone says, well, I can allow. Who knows the next thing you do, you 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 put in a two hundred square foot patio. Right? Um. So I don't I don't know where that lands, if it.
We don't want a patio in our lake yard. We we don't have very much grass back there for the kids to play. We're we're gonna keep those stairs as small as we can, so.
The attention is minimum required by the.
Okay, all right. Um, as long as that's noted, um Doug, I guess that's my, I think, just uh. My question or concern uh o- only on the property. Um, other than that, um. Yeah, I I I that's some of my questions I had.
Brian, yeah, next.
Sure, um, I had a one question, um. Does, do the modifications change the actual footprint of the house? Cause I don't I don't see that outlined. And I was kind of confused when we were discussing.
The uh the the footprint that is going to change, if you look at A two. A one is existing. And then if you compare that with A two. You can see the new exterior walls by the garage are drawn in the dark blue, or maybe that's purple depending on. How how you see that.
Okay, okay.
So we're bringing that wall that's to the southwest corner in tighter to the house to come into compliance with the set. Seven-foot setback. And then we're we're building out a little bit into the driveway so we can get a bedroom up above that garage.
And a car.
Yeah, and and get a car. The existing garage is nineteen feet long, which is. It's tough to fit an SUV in this. Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a Mini Cooper for a while, that used to fit in there, but then we had to upsize. We had the two kids and child seats to get in there and we can't park in that garage.
The shorthand way to think about the addition of that was done on the first floor is that the garage is brought in line with the front. It just turns to the side here, I said that.
Yeah.
The line that I can you see the colors?
Yes.
Uh, the green line at the at the lake shore. And the garage door wall is uh aligned.
Okay. Yeah, um, that's the only question I had, I I think. Um. We see lots of properties uh with similar limitations along the lake. Um, you've got an old house, an old property. Obviously, you're on, like, as you discussed, you're on multiple plots, um which complicates things further. Um, it looks like you've done a really nice job of trying to respect the ordinances as much as you can, which is falls under our. Um. Our uh re- requirements for granting a variance of unnecessary hardship and physical property limitations, so. Um. Yeah, I um I think it's pretty clear to me and I don't have any other questions. Doug, you can call on everybody in the room.
Yeah. Okay, so um you heard me before, I go right to the definitions. Um, and I go right to the, right to the ordinance and right to the purposes of that ordinance. Um, but I'm gonna back off that for for a second and just um comment on two things. One, um, I really appreciate how thorough this packet was. It made it very easy to kind of understand what you're doing on a a lot. That I will get to that is a little bit challenging, um maybe a lot of a challenge. So I do appreciate the thoroughness of that, um. Um, so just going right to like the definitions, um I, you know, I think that. You know, from my perspective at least, I think this is a, this is a unique lot. I think a lot of people say, well, my my lot's unique, um. Uh, I can get on my high horse about how corner lots aren't unique, but, um. Uh, but I I think this does, is is a unique lot, um. With the the driveway, with the with the driveway that used to be an alley and you do have. You know, there's an easement, you've got the lot six, lot five problem. Uh, there's a lot going on here. Um, in addition to our.
Took me a long time to understand it all, but you understand. I spent so much me a lot. We had several phone conversations.
Yeah, um. Uh, like, like, like when I also spent some time with this, uh some time with with this to try to thoroughly understand it. I appreciate how mindful you were with your approach to what you're you're trying to do. And especially with curing um what's going on with the garage right now and bringing that into compliance. Um, I like that you're minimizing what you need um a- as far as variance and even setting back and minimizing um some of the some. Side yard, shore yard, a shore yard. That you that you need with how you're setting back the the second story, um. Uh, I think it's a really thoughtful approach, um. It's also a non, an existing non-conforming property, which we do run into occasionally here in Manona. Um. So I I think it 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 squarely meets the uniqueness of property limitation. I will point out, I think I point this out almost every every time. That a growing family isn't grounds for a a variance, but I think you get to unique physical property limitations without that. Um, hardship is always the hardest one, and for me, um if you look at the purpose of the zoning restrictions and then like. Humilative effects, you're 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 bringing this co- this home into modernization. If you just let it be how it was without any upgrades whatsoever. It it would probably eventually fall into the lake. Uh, or 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 be very undesirable. Um, uh. You're not doing anything from my perspective. I took some time to look at some of the houses around what the what the nature of the character of the neighborhood is. Uh, a lot of the houses are kind of similarly, similarly two-story. I think you're correct. There might be only be like one or two over there that are still one.
Yeah.
Um. Um, so I think you've taken an approach that like looks at long-term effects of the neighborhood. Um, and I think it's, that doesn't have any harm to that public interest. Um, you know, I think it's going to be an attractive property in the end. Um. I I did have a question about whether or not it was a. With with what you're curing, what you're doing, if it's adding or subtracting to what what's not conforming, I think it's probably adding a little bit what's not conforming. With the second story with the total total not conforming, but probably not by a lot.
Yeah, there's a about the size of a. Large pizza box that's still an encroach.
Encroach. I really think.
It's a structural.
Oh, right, and I think it's really, really, really minimal, um. Um. Uh, of of what's going on. I don't have a whole lot of questions. Um. Just kind of those general comments.
You can see that there. And also to know that, um. If we built a roof there and said, okay, we're just gonna take the shoreline and build a roof there, that actually would have more mass than balcony.
Um, the only question I have is, how do delivery drivers find you?
It's dreadful, it's dreadful, um. Because Outlook Street is only two blocks long and it's a dead end to the lake and then our driveway is further recessed back. And worse yet, the address is four four oh five Outlook. Ooh, there is also four more oh five Winnicott. Which is right around the corner from us and about fifty percent of our Amazon packages get delivered over there.
Yeah. Do you have a direct trail between?
They they get used to just seeing us come over, walked on their driveway, packages off there soon, because it happens pretty frequently.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. But it's also where we we get packages for everybody on Outlook Street delivered to our house too, because they can't find. Four four oh seven or four four oh three or forty-four hundred either, so. We have our own little package delivery going on in the neighborhood. We redistribute things when they get lost.
That's good. I have such good neighbors.
Yeah, we are very fortunate. Yeah, we are very fortunate that way, for sure.
Um, I guess my comments are that I think it. Your application speaks to the purpose of um this board and that you're asking for an incremental relief. You've gone out of your way to do so, um. I think that, you know, it would. Trying to conform with cause would be unnecessarily burdensome. Um, you can't offset walls like that, um, and have a stable structure. Um, definitely have unique physical properties um to, or limitations to the property, especially when your shoreline. Moves on, depending on when the survey is done. Um, and I don't think there's any harm to the public interest, in fact, I think you've shown. Um, that you're respecting that by putting the porch on the second floor, you're limiting the mass of the the house. And people's view um along the shoreline.
All right, is uh anybody willing to put a motion together with all of the elements that we normally need as part of them? And you can use your sheet of paper as a cheat sheet if you'd like.
When you're, I think when's talking, but you did.
Oh, yeah, yes. Motion if nobody else did.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to find my cheat, my cheat sheet. Uh, so number one, um, make a motion to. Um, approve the variance under these uh notes of. I don't, uh, the unnecessary, uh, I don't see, or the unnecessary hardship. Um. Definitely, um. You know, hardship falls, uh, more, I would say mainly. Primarily under the unique physical property limitations. Um, and that is the hardship um of this property. Um. Ultimately, that, that's why I was interested about the seven thousand. What, four hundred, something like that, square foot over the property?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, is the smallest one that I have heard of. Um, so.
Two that are a little smaller than us, but uh.
And then, uh, no harm to the public uh interest, I don't see any harm to the public interest. You're staying within the parameters and boundaries of the foundation um of the existing house, um. So that is my motion, am I missing anything?
Doug, do you need anything else?
Uh, if I can get a second, we could then.
The what?
Did you need the um language about fixing the lots?
Yeah, I think conditioned on a lot, conditioned on uh adopting the city attorney's uh recommendation of. Um, combining the lot, lot five and six, and that issue be. Um, remedied before permitting um is issued. I think that, that's what it was, right?
City attorney combining lots or, uh, yes, yeah, I I would even keep out lots five and six to to the point the applicant made. That there's, there's a portion that's on the neighbors, um, so.
Sure.
Buying to the satisfaction, I would say, of the city attorney would be.
Yeah.
Sufficient.
All right, when are you good with that for your?
Yes, thank you, Brad, for, yes, uh, adding to my, adding to my motion.
All right, so we have a motion that's been collaborative in nature, and then we just need a second.
I'll second.
Perfect.
That's second.
That's the second, and then Doug, do you have any clarifications or anything that we need as a amendment to what you have?
I, I think I have what I need, um, this has already been stated, yes, thanks.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments that the board has? Perfect. Any questions that the applicant has?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
No.
Perfect. Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, there doesn't sound like there's any questions regarding, and it satisfies uh our, our. Our wonderful staff, Doug, so uh all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, uh, motion has carried. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you very much for all the time, yeah, duration, looking, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely, and so that was item eight, we uh can move on item nine, which, um. Doug, do you have anything in item nine that you want to share with the group?
Yeah, so, uh, no applications received. Yes, thank. Uh, exactly, my job patients received, yeah, um.
I'm on the other month, and my daughter just graduated, it comes on.
Oh.
So it's clean.
Oh.
Yeah, some bitter or worse, it's just different, right?
Yeah, I recognize your face, I was trying to place it.
Uh, just one quick um D I update I'd like to give. Um, I think I mentioned at a previous meeting about public noticing uh for pipeline items, I just wanted to call that out. We have um very yellow sign that is now out, uh, if if anyone's seen it. Uh, it's sort of by the blue, possible, um, so thrive Dean Spring Haven. I got a couple of those out, so anything that is requiring a mail public notice now for pipeline commission, uh, we'll, we'll be getting yard signs. Um, sort of with, so anybody walking by would also be able to 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 know about the meeting, how to join, how to submit comments, things like that, so. Uh, it was a very much a low hanging fruit item, um, but something that came up during staff discussions of that. Um, so spreading the word a little more outside of more traditional channels, so. Uh, we did that, and as way of just a quick update on sustainability. Um, the the chair of the sustainability committee and um city staff, um, assistant planner, Thor Jepson. Um, met with city department heads a couple of weeks ago. Um, basically, uh, reminded staff of the, I think, twenty sixteen uh sustainability plan. And some of the metrics, some of the reporting, um, that that we as a city, um, are are committed to, things that we're working for. And so, um, some of the reporting mechanisms were, um. Walked through, um, as well, in addition to department head specific meetings. Um, I know that met with police, with fire, um, and with public works as well, sort of how to. Um, addressing the goals here and then keep moving forward, so. Um, I know, I I don't often touch on that, so I just wanted to call that out specifically. That's it, thank you.
Awesome. Any questions that the group has for Doug? All right, see none, uh, I think the next item, without looking at my agenda, is uh motion for a German.
It is.
I'll move to a German.
All right. And I see Ryan's gonna second it.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, awesome, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
I mean, go enjoy the sunshine before it gets cloudy again here.
Yeah, you should.